Oh, it's on. Hey, Carrie.
This is just talking about how that these things are.
So, Meg, when we do the consent agenda matters, I'm going to start off right off with.
Yeah, so do I leave the room for that? For, yeah, for Laura Grinning.
I was gonna say, just so that we don't have. Okay, so she hasn't looked at it, the stuff yet, for anything? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, Carrie. I didn't get to talk to you, buddy. You've been very busy. Okay, all right, so this is the Sag Harbor Village's regular meeting of the Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board, Thursday, January 11th, 2024. Let's please stand for the salute of the fact.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So we'll start with, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th, 2023 meeting.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move on to the consent agenda matters. We have 165 Hampton Street, 50 Archibald Way, 26 Main Street, 8 Forest Street, and 152 Division Street. I'll take a motion to accept.
I move that we accept all five consent agenda matters.
Can we have a second, please? I guess I seconded because I am the other person who looked at it. Okay, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go on to old business. It's gonna start with 287 Main Street for proposed renovations and additions. Okay, so do we? Somebody make them, I'll make the motion to adjourn. 287.
And for the record, our next meeting is February 8.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. I did.
And who's second?
Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Number two is 5 Washington Avenue for proposed demolition of existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling.
I would second calling, Zee's not here.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep going. Number three is 27 Howard, and it's for proposed renovation and swimming pool. 27 Howard, okay. Come on up, Anthony.
So we were here last year.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it was last year.
It was last year.
Last meeting discussing this project on Howard Street. And I think the biggest question was kind of what the existing state of the of the house was because it was, as you know, we inherited this project from a previous owner who had started construction. They kind of stopped midstream and the house had been abandoned for a few years. So I did meet Zach over there and a couple of things that we, changes that we've made is we have photographic evidence that basically via Google Street View that the original stoop went out straight, not turned, which is what I originally had it. So we're just doing that as a as a straight staircase now, as close as we can get it, get it to what it originally looked like. The front facade is basically exactly the same as it is. Yeah, we, there were originally windows on the on the lower level. Zach and I discussed what those original windows might have been. We don't really have any way of knowing what they what they were. We just know where they were located. So I think the safest bet there was to just go with six over six to match the the windows on the, the existing windows on the side of four. You know, really, no other really big changes here to the house itself. As we noted at the last meeting, we're not changing the envelope of the building at all. No changes to height or no dormers, no changes to the footprint, other than rebuilding the front steps and the back deck that were there originally. So that's, that's really, that's really it. We did start working, we are working on a little bit of a landscape plan here, which I think we talked about briefly last time. I think one thing here that is of note is we do fortunately still have quite a bit of the original stone from the original foundation on site there. And there's a little bit of a, you know, the site sort of slopes towards the back. So we can actually use some of that stone for a little, you know, that two foot tall retaining wall or so, sort of separating the main part of the house and the pool area. The pool is tiny, 10 by 15. That's all we can do for setbacks and set pick and all that sort of stuff. Other thing I would note is that I know that the trend these days in landscaping is away from expansive lawns. So that's what we're doing, just a lot of plantings around the house. I do have actually a couple of extra copies of that landscape plan to salute for the record. And one final thing here is just the brick. It's actually, I discussed the brick about that during the what were you saying, the can of the line things for. So that's, you know, the drawings. And kind of we did try to find a kind of a brick that was kind of similar to what was there originally. If you look at the old photos, it's basically, it was basically just a red brick. I mean, a lot of times you see the brick with the brick dark brown and black in it. That particular, this particular house didn't have that. It was mostly just red brick with a little bit of white here and there. So that's what we're gonna pick out for the brick. I forgot to write down the actual name of the brick, but I do have that. I could get back to you.
So it's a new brick?
Yeah, same brick. I, you know, looking at some of that old brick there, I first want the condition issues, and I'm not even really sure what was from the, from the driveway and what was from the
The surface.
the side. Yeah.
There is some brick that was saved and stacked along with the stone from the entire original foundation, of course, it was moved. But they did save some of the stones, some of the brick. So we talked about possibility of recycling it. But brick, when it's sort of saved out of a masonry wall, doesn't always hold up that well. So.
Yeah, and we are gonna reutilize the stone, which is in much better shape, as you know, as much of it as we can use.
And I think Zach said in his report that you do something to make the mortar the right color.
Yeah, you can put some sand in it that tints it. It's, you know, the point is to not use a gray Portland cement because that has a very distinct and very modern look to it. And what's interesting is the brick house right next door. So you have a lot of period brick right next door. And you can see it's a different period. It's from the 1870s, I guess. But it's period brick and kind of a tinted sandy colored mortar. The problem with the Portland is that it's harder than the brick and it accelerates the deterioration of the brick. So the softer line based mortar, even though it's kind of white, you need to tint it a little better.
So you're willing to do what he just explained?
Yeah, definitely.
You're going to do that, correct?
So we're gonna maybe fiddle around with the formulation, but you know, it won't be Portland cement.
I'd like to say it looks, I really like it with the windows, the two windows on the lower. I mean, it puts the house into proportion a little bit more.
You see it better than, than the steering.
Yes, definitely. Very nice.
And I just want to very briefly, because I don't talk and drag this out, but what's so exciting really about this house, Montauk House, but it's really, really unusual to be sitting up so high on a raised basement. And that appears, doesn't look like it got raised up later. It looks like that we only have one other house in town on Rector Street that's done that way. So it has a very tall looking facade, even though it's really, you know, an almost story of a house. Sort of preserve the appearance as you're saying.
Interesting, yeah. If you get off the ferry in Connecticut, the Orient Point Ferry, if you drive around New London in the old part, there are a lot of these houses that are high up with big tall brick foundations. I don't know why.
Well, many of them, we have a couple here, Budabury, et cetera, right here on Main Street. There were earlier houses that were lifted up and put on raised basements when the area went commercial. So you take a residential neighborhood and when it goes commercial, sometimes the response is raise the houses up, get stores underneath, and sell the house on top. That's one thing. This one, although, looks like it was built that way. So that's a little different, but it's a similar kind of response to residential neighborhood.
So Anthony, you've seen, have you seen his recommendations that printed out here? So we need to, I'm gonna give you this one. I want you to take a look at it and and see that you agree with everything that's written there. And then we can put that in in our final deal here.
Does he need the other page of the?
I think that's the one.
The straight stair, we talked about the windows.
This is the recommendation that we did.
We facing the brick, we got the brick.
The windows, you, well, yeah, that was already.
Yeah, this is.
We're good? You agree with it? All right. That's all, that's what we need to know. Yeah, all right. So I, one other thing, real quick, Zach, you did in your report here on page four, a detail for the railing, the newles, the, and the rail and everything. Is that? That's this. Okay, I wanted to make sure.
So one thing about that railing is if you really zoom into the Google Street View, like, there's no way I could really duplicate it with a photograph or anything. You'll see a little funny little dental detail at the top of the bill post. So we're gonna try to duplicate that as best we can on the new thing. Other than that, though, it was very, very plain railing, you know, just square, probably two by two spindles and a plain top, top and bottom rail and just a square bill post.
Made of wood?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone, I think I'm good with this. Are you good, Meg?
I'm good, and I love the landscape plan.
So I would like a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
27.
27. Yeah, sorry, 50th Howard Street.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm just going to, yeah, I'm just gonna include this with that. This is his recommendations that Anthony was agreeing to and stuff. So, all right, so I don't have to, all right. Well, I just want to make sure. I guess Judith. Okay. So you'll make sure right here that that is included in this.
But you can put a note there that.
Also, I figured that's where I was gonna just do this, boom. All right? Because it's all right there, buddy, when you just agreed. Thank you. Okay, now.
You could just email it to me too, that so I can forward it to the homeowner. They'll be interested in that.
Okay, we'll move on now to new business, to Good Care. We're gonna, we're going to 207 Jermaine Avenue, and it's for proposed additions to the residence, garage, porch, and construction of a swimming pool. Certificate of appropriate. This is the one right on the corner.
On the corner by you guys, through the school.
And there. So you know.
So it's, I'm excited that this is a project, Anthony. Yeah.
Excellent, okay. Okay, Bethany Burmagau, 1618 East Street.
Thank you.
Once again, second to three. So this is 207 Jermaine Avenue. It's probably everybody who's been down Jermaine Avenue is familiar with this house. It's right on the corner there, across the street from the school. Lot of houses on that, on that little, that little block there are very similar, are probably all built at the same time. This one is probably in rougher condition than some of the other ones. And the plan here is to kind of bring it back to what it once was. So you see on the lower level here is the existing two, two street facades. One is as you're coming from Division Street before you get to the turn, and then this is right after the turn. You know, I, I'm just gonna show the site plan first because I might be thinking this is boring to begin with. So this is coming down Jermaine. You make that sharp corner there with a stop sign. It's schools over here. So it's sort of a triangular shaped property, not quite a perfect triangle, but a triangular shaped existing house. And then there's a detached garage. You can, you can see here, existing house, detached garage. The garage itself is actually contributing as well. So that factored into how we decided to do this, do this scheme here. The house, we strongly believe the house originally had a front porch. You'll see from the photographs there that there are two doors that basically walk out onto nothing, or well elevated above ground. There's just some, some rocks that they piled up for a stoop, but nothing permanent. So and the other houses on this street that are analogous to this house have.
Yeah, have the porches.
So the idea here is to reconstruct or rebuild the, the front porch as a wrapper porch. So you know, the, the doors will now come out to that, to, to the porch. We did some detailing on the porch that will be similar to some other, you know, other porches of that time period in Sag Harbor Village. With a little kind of Victorian turned post and the little bracket, brackets there, which I actually based that on a similar house I did just around the corner on Montauk Street. Other change we're doing, proposing to do to the house is connect the house to the garage. Garage is actually in pretty decent shape. So we, we can, we think we can work, work this into the building. Just connecting the kitchen off of the connecting piece between the two. So it'll be sort of a low rambling kind of addition. We're not planning on any second floor additions to this house. We did get CBA approval to, to do all of this. It required some setback relief and not jerk relief. House currently has vinyl siding. We're gonna take that off and do shingle siding, which is what, you know, the similar houses down the street all are. You'll see that these houses are sort of, some of them are natural shingles and some of them are painted white. We're going with sort of painting everything white, the trim and the shingles. And that's, that's really, that's really it, basically. Oh, actually, it's not, because I'm gonna stop briefly about the site plan. There are some great trees along Divisions, along, sorry, Jermaine Avenue. They're not on our property. We won't, we won't harm them. We're gonna take, move the driveway over a little bit so it's a little bit further away from the corner, but just past this big tree where there's even a little, kind of circle they didn't curve to accommodate it. But that will be where the new driveway will be, just a little bit of screening, the CBA requested for the, for the swimming pool area. And that's, that's basically it for the, for the landscaping.
And that's, that's a couple of suggestions. The porch, are there steps? I can see there's steps off the side portion.
Yeah.
But are there steps in the front?
Um, we weren't planning on it.
So I'm just asking because I don't know if it does require us in terms of height of the deck relative to the ground. Do you not need?
It's coming.
No, we do not need a railing. It's, it's under, it's under 30 inches, so we're not going to need.
It's coming right out to the level.
So just steps down, because it would be usual to have steps at the front door. So, you know, comparable to the ones on, on the side. I mean, because it's the front door.
I think, you know, the thought is, is that I don't think anybody has used this as a front door for like decades. So I think, you know, that's right.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's just visually, architecturally, I mean, steps leading up to the front doors, sort of thing.
Or at least like the center of the porch, that's usually, I think that's, I think that's how most of the houses on that street are. Like they have two doors and then the porch actually cut beats in the center and that's where the steps come. But, I mean, since it's, I think it's gonna be a low porch.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah, so there's a porch in front of all that.
But that brings me to one other quick comment, which is, I don't know if you've measured this out, but the placement, not, you have to have posts at each end, right? Okay, so you have the post to the left, and you got the post at the right where the porch turns. The question becomes, how many posts were there? And the only way you can tell that is once you pull off the siding, you should be able to see some structural evidence of how the porch frame was attached to the house, possibly, quite possibly. Because there's something a little awkward about those posts sitting in front of the windows. Now, I don't know whether you've got this, if the spacing, it would be more logical to have three posts, five altogether, not four. Because that would bring, if I can just get up.
Three. Four, five. You mean five in the front?
Five, instead of four. When you're rebuilding a building.
He's got five.
Okay, so that's not, we're not talking about.
Does your house have a porch?
If there were five posts.
Do you have one of these?
If we bring this post closer to where it stands, the front door, and that one's in the three, the stairs. It's just a slightly designed tweaky thin. Might want to look into that. Sure, but that, of course, then becomes, you got two here. So it would just be a, maybe the evidence as you're working on the house would suggest, you know, the actual post arrangement, because you're premising all this on the fact that there it all likely that there was a porch, just as you're saying, that wrapped the house and that justifies that second door, which is usually into the dining room kind of thing. So I don't, I wouldn't make this approval process conditional on that, but I'm just saying that the process of investigation might lead you to that, in which case you're just gonna have to spring for a couple more posts. And then that would alter the design a little bit. But I think that would make it a little more accurate in terms of what we expect to see here.
Right.
Other than that, I think this is great. And really, the extension to kind of keep it to one story.
Yeah.
It's a little unusual.
Yeah, it's very nice, very good. Yeah.
Very, very good.
Thank goodness.
So I think that's a really good, good way to link.
CBA, I love that we're only doing one story.
Yes.
Sure, right.
We do too.
Very good, very.
I, I have a question. Zach, you usually make a point that garages of this era were separate from the house. So you don't find any fault with adding.
Well, this little guy is real, it, it is, as Anthony pointed out, it's, it's referenced as being contributing, but it's in 19, it's not of the period of the house. So, so that's one issue. So it's not like it's the original. This is a house that would have been built when you either had your own carriage and your horse or you didn't. It wasn't about garages, right? So I think visually, to link that garage and find a way to use it and to not make that a problem and be in the way of a bigger addition, which could have been another approach to this, I think that's a pretty good compromise.
Very good.
Great, great.
So, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm, I think the house is fine. I like the modest addition. I guess I'm concerned about the pool, the size of the pool. I don't think any houses in that area have a pool. And the house that abuts it, you can see in this photo, is right along the property line there.
It, I just would say that it is smaller than your average pools, 12 by 24.
It's still kind of large for, I think, a property that is so close to.
It fits a little, you know.
I mean, if all of these approvals have happened, I'm just surprised that it's approved. I, I just know that pools are, have not been approved on this street for a very long time. And I don't know why they are starting to be. On, maybe on Accra Lee, not on, not on this side of Jermaine.
You've got a lot of nice coverage, though, in the landscape plan.
Yeah, what kinds, what kind of trees are these?
So we've got Ilocso Paca, American Holly, five to six feet. And that we said, you know, that was something that actually came up at the ZBA. And it, you know, this did have to be public, publicly noticed for the ZBA. And so, you know, the immediate neighbors are aware of what's going on. One of them, we didn't hear from. The other one, we got a said, let's say sort of a lukewarm favorable letter.
Okay.
Basically saying they didn't have any problems with, with what we were doing.
Okay, well, I, I'm satisfied with the, the plan and actually pleased with, with it.
I would second that.
All right, so it's like a motion? Okay.
I'll second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Michelle. You want us to be louder?
Me.
I approve.
Yep. This is my second. Shall I go to the second, back to the second call?
No.
Okay, I'll keep going?
Yeah, you can do the second call.
After number two? Okay, we'll go to 7 Harvard Road. Proposed demolition of existing dwelling and construct new dwelling and swimming pool. 7 Harvard.
Okay, so a little bit of a change in pace here, because we are in a brand new building. So there's an existing house on the property, sort of half of it's a two-story house, half of it's a one-story house. Probably 1980s, I'd say, vintage. There's a big swimming pool in the backyard currently. You can, I have photographs of that in the, in the file there if you wanted to look at the existing. So what we're proposing here is to demolish the existing house and build a new house. Basically, it conforms to all the setbacks. It is 2,800, 2,850 square feet total. So it's It is twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight hundred fifty square feet uh total. Um, so it's uh under three thousand square feet. Um, it's uh.
This would say them now.
First floor, um, the uh main house, a little one-story screen, uh porch opening off the uh back of it. So this is the view looking from uh, looking from.
Demolish the house, they're going to change the guys.
That's, that's a house. This is from the street from Harvard. This is from the back. That's the existing swimming pool there.
Yes, and it's going to be, that pool's gonna be taken away, right?
Yeah, we're doing it much smaller.
You're moving it and moving it back. Is that right?
Yeah. Correct.
Hmm.
So, yeah, this is, this is from the rear, uh, much smaller. House itself.
Prouse.
Uh, aside here.
That's an architectural theory.
One thing I wanted to do here is just kind of show a, uh, the relationship of the scale of the existing house uh to the uh, to the new house. So, our house is uh, is, the proposed house is a little bit more compressed than the existing one. You can see the outline here is basically the uh, existing house, um. So we're uh, we're a little bit more compressed, a little bit taller, a little bit.
Anthony, can you bring that a little closer to us?
Yeah, I can't see.
It's hard too because of the shadow. No, I know, I'm looking, they're looking. But I love it when they, when he's right up there.
Here we go.
Right here, right? I do, I have it in my hand.
Sorry, the dotted line.
The existing.
So uh, yeah, just sort of showing here, just that the dotted line is the existing.
It's bigger.
Just to compare the scale of the existing.
Yeah, a lot bigger.
It's not a contributing hole, is that it?
No.
What was that, contribution?
That was um, redwood was like all woods and.
No.
That's very red, lots of red wood.
A lot of red wood.
And uh, that's kind of what we're, we're going to put the outside, it's a, a western red cedar. Some horizontal claverty on the first floor, or uh cedar shingles on the second floor and cedar shingle roof.
Yeah, I, I like the design of the house, uh, you know, compared to, well, it's just personal taste, you know, of, of other homes that have been built in redwood.
Yeah.
After the other ones are demolished, you know, but uh, I li, I like it.
Twenty-eight hundred fifty square feet is a little bigger than what I'm usually doing, but it compared to some of the other houses in Redwood, it's just this, you know, well under that kind of scale.
And it's, it's within the code of landing, so I think it's okay.
Rendering.
Yeah.
We're showing the colors, the natural colors that it will be.
You know, I mean, I, I tried to get the color as close as I could, but yeah, we have the idea being there.
It is red.
Yeah, it'll be a natural wood color.
Okay. It almost be.
And the, and the roof's the same color also.
Redwood.
How they would be a little bit.
A redwood for redwood. Yes. I'm getting.
I'm curious, what, the, the uh existing swimming pool is very long and you're narrowing it quite significantly. Can you just talk a little bit about the rationale behind it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the owners have been living in the house for a few years and they just felt they didn't really need such a big swimming pool. We are a little bit close to our lock coverage limit and because the footprint of the house is getting a little bit bigger, we, you know, we had to kind of make sure we were still under the twenty-five percent total. So it was just the said, you know, like, we don't need such a big swimming pool, let's give that lock coverage to the house.
Lots of little, uh, short laps. So small.
Is this railing on the second floor? Patio? Deck? Um, is there glass paneling?
Yeah, it's by glass panel.
Oh.
Yeah.
And if you're out on the second floor patio, can you look into the neighbor's yard?
Uh, no, it's pretty well, well screened from the neighbors and I do want to talk about that a little bit. Um, there's, there's a lot of immature vegetation um around the property, which we're not going to interfere with. Uh, there's just, we're just gonna fill in some gaps, um, especially on the um, I think this is the north side of the property.
Do we have, um, those photos again?
Yeah, I, I think I do have.
Oh, here. That'll kind of show you.
Somewhere.
Right?
There should be a photo of showing the uh.
We only have the two.
We're only those and the, and the renderings.
Yeah. Files. I know it's specifically.
I see something coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes, look.
Yeah.
We.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Oh, I see. Wow, totally different.
Yeah.
Um, well, we always want to know about whether, uh, I mean, you could have a big party out on this deck and everybody would be outraged, so is there enough screening and
it looks.
From the uh upper deck?
That's what we were looking at, that picture.
Kind of like a deep front yard, isn't it? Like a well-screened front yard, isn't it? You should enter.
Yeah.
That's the back, looking at.
All right, yeah.
Because we're not in historic district, we have to adhere to the thirty-five foot, not the twenty-foot setbacks. That's why the house is so pushed so far back. Um, and it's not a deep property either, so we, you know, we have the thirty-foot rear yard and the thirty-five foot front yard, so we're really just kind of
Yeah.
We may just like fill it a little bit.
Will you retain the circular driveway?
Uh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna retain the two trees, uh, but bring a new driveway and kind of center it between the two trees and kind of just sort of there, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is on the plan.
Which is.
Good.
Uh, not, in a second. Everybody seems to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions or anything for Anthony? Okay, I, I agree. I'll uh, uh, take a motion.
Seven Harvard Road, certificate of appropriate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, what else you got? Well, I, I appreciate too, like the, how you, you, you know, presented tonight with the, the the plans or, or the, of how it, how it looks now and then what it's going to look like, you know? I, I appreciate that. That helps uh make, help us make decisions.
Did you sign?
Oh, I don't think you gave it to us.
Uh, you're one of the says.
It, oh, it didn't. I put it away.
All right, so we're gonna go back to um, Five Washington.
I keep wanting to write twenty-three. Thank you.
I saw you hesitate.
I might have done that on the first one. We're going back now to old business, Five Washington Avenue. For the proposed demolition of existing dwelling and construction of new dwelling.
I was last here a month ago, I was asked to change the paint. First and foremost, please change the exterior color. There was a desire from there was a desire, it's best white house, black trim inside harbor. So uh, went ahead and selected a color called lightness. Um, was thoughtful about it, to me, it really represented maybe a color you would see uh looking out in Haven Beach. Maybe in April or, or May morning in spring. And using the white trim really further emphasizes the uh, the lavender, the green gray uh color tone, this, this palette. And the black one goes um, in context of, of the other colors, kind of represents more of the heritage style, less, less of a modern.
You have that picture.
Uh, less of a modern barn, people kind of.
It's like a grayish. Almost looks, you know, like you say, a misty green almost. I like it.
Yeah.
Also, we could use the lighting media plan for certain considerations, something that I got. We replaced all the boxwoods with dogwoods, with uh, with cedars and
I can't win.
Sorry, I got some glitches. And, and uh, we used some of the low, some of the base area, the low, uh, low wood, she was ready. For all the uh, these handles, there's the approved data plants. Um, also vibram and butterfly bushes.
Very good. Yeah, do we have landscape plan in here? I don't, I don't know, I'm looking.
Oh, there we go.
Just down the house. Okay, here it is.
She's down.
Got it? Okay.
When I, when I found out, it uh, we moved the plants from the uh PVC trim, ninety-nine percent of it. And so we're gonna be using five quarter by four, uh, into uh. In height.
Good.
Questions or feedback, I'll, yeah, I'll answer.
Believe, weren't we concerned with this aesthetic of the what would you call that, like, the roof coming, making a triangle on the facade there?
I, 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 I do, I, I do remember so about that. The one um issue that I, uh, went over to, you know.
Zach.
Zach.
Um, was that it was almost identical to features that across the street. Um, I showed you some pictures of it.
Right, and that becomes a problem, the sort of similarity thing is, is tricky. So, I just looked at it. I mean, my, the reason for my comment
Yeah.
was just that, um, I mean, you don't want this to be or look like a replica of a historical house.
Right.
So that's something that you don't want. Um, I was just calling to question those, how emphasize those.
He was suggesting getting rid of those, yeah.
I think it's an aesthetic choice, so I don't.
Right.
Feel, I just brought that up as something worth, worth thinking about, right? You don't, you don't need to change it because it's not historically correct. That's not the issue before the board, so it's really an aesthetic question. About what you think it's pleasing or not.
Yeah, I think that's displeasing.
That's the, the roof, correct? A little, the little roof right here?
It's a little.
Yeah.
Well, it sits on the facade. In other words, the, the gable, the attic.
Yeah, it comes out.
Doesn't project or recede, so the wall itself, as far as I know, the, the, the front facade rises up into the gable on the same plane. So there's no, there's no step back that that little roof element needs to
Be there.
cover. It's, it's purely decorative.
Correct.
So, just a way of breaking up the height of the, of the facade, so it's really an aesthetic choice whether you.
And the same on the sides there. As, although that, no, that's a real roof, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that is a roof though, right? Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay, so, uh.
It's a consistent theme.
Yeah, that's true.
I just think it's strange.
It's different.
I think it would look so much better without that um jutting across completely. I think it would look okay to have it jutting in like a foot on each side for like that, to create that kind of a um.
That would go away.
Angular decor, but.
Are you, are you going to show us?
It's very strange.
I'm looking for a photo of the house across the street. I think you're referring to Greek returns.
Yes.
And, and um, I, I thought about it and the value is that, that, that possibility, it's just, there's, it just literally would be like a replica of the house across the street and, and.
Isn't what we, yeah, right.
Kind of a encouragement to kind of.
What about no Greek returns and no jutting across? How about just plain flat facade?
Just clavering coming straight down from the tip to the bottom with, with no cross piece.
I, I, uh, my architect was like, it's gonna look too like, I'm checking out the, I have this picture.
Well, I, I, um, I, I know what you're saying and I, it, it, it's, you're saying that just what we had discussed before, we don't want the two homes to look the same, so.
The column was not to make it look like a corporation.
Right, right, like a little, yeah, yeah.
I was trying to, trying to be mindful that I didn't want to nerve what was across the street, this difference.
I, I mean, I think it's a, it's a new house, it's a new design and a different aesthetic.
Yeah, I, no, I would agree.
I don't find it particularly.
It's.
Attractive? Unattractive, unattractive.
Oh, yeah, I, I think it's.
Breaks up the mind pretty well.
I'm okay with it.
Well, we can agree to disagree.
Yes.
There you go.
There you go, perfect. Anybody else uh, that wanna comment on it or on anything?
Um, total footprints of the new structure. How, what is that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Square footage.
I, I don't have that planned for me. Um, I did, we did those uh, stuff there, um, issues.
Yeah, you should try it.
Because it was not in historic district, it was not an issue.
All right.
No, but the, the total footprint that's.
Thirteen, thirteen seventy?
Well, you added up.
That's just one floor, I believe.
Total building coverage.
A lot of coverage. What's this?
Yeah, total building coverage.
So you're saying, what is the square footage of that? You know, we should say it in this little table, but I.
Well, of course, you, you need to.
I think the footprint is sixteen hundred, right?
Keep vigilant here. I think if we have it before us.
This is, this is subject to a public. Public.
Interesting.
Public hearing.
No, it's not three thousand.
Under three.
It's under, under three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's under three.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is twenty-three hundred.
See, our, our friend would have that written down. Is what? If that's what had to happen.
Because it's under.
Okay, well, uh, everybody's, anybody, I, I would propose that somebody make a motion.
It's like they're looking and.
Okay, so, Carrie, we just made the first motion. Do we have a second?
Who made the motion?
Michelle made the first.
Okay, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Opposed. Okay, someone opposed.
Thank you.
Landscape plan.
Yeah, let's get good.
Yeah, and I love that, the, the way, you know, what do you read with the color of the house? I might have dated that first one. I might have dated that first one I did twenty-three and twenty-two. When you take a look at it. Thank you. Okay, moving on with our new business, we'll go to twenty-five Richards Avenue and its proposed modification to what was already approved. You start by showing us if it's possible, what was approved and how it's different.
Yeah. So I'm, I am representing architect, we presented the project initially with approval in December of twenty-two, just over a year. So the existing house, it's a early nineties era home that has two volumes to it and entry here. Is heavily kind of leaning towards, right on the fifteen foot setback on the north side of the property. There's a large swath of land up to the south side. So proposal is to add an addition to the house and renovate the interior of the house. And we're building out sort of addition on this side and on, towards the back. You can see the back of the house is sort of stark and doesn't really embrace the backyard. So we wanted to address that. Just diagrammatically, the existing house, or follows this footprint here, and we're adding this way and back. For just a recap, again, this also includes a pool, landscaping all around, given. There's an existing driveway in the front that we're maintaining the layout. So basically, the, the lot coverage, the GFA, and, and building coverage has not changed. We sort of moved things around.
Okay.
The big difference is, well, it's internal reshuffling of program. So after we designed it, we priced it out. The owners decided we'd want to rethink how we fit out the interior. They wanted to move bedrooms around and they wanted to have a bedroom, a, a different bedroom layout configuration on the second floor. It changes the shape of the house. Don't need that more than that. So this is the second floor plan. I don't know if you can see it okay, but basically there's now a double height space. I, I shall also precursor, there's a pre-existing forming to remain skyplanting, skyplant encroachment on the door side of the house. But we're leaving as is. We're reframing it because of the volume, but we're not changing it. So with that, we have sort of an open, or kitchen dining room area. We're maintaining the original front entry in this area. And then the second, the living room, and opening it up as well to now a mezzanine space or a corner library. There was a bedroom up here. There also was a bedroom here. The stair layout is the same as it was before. The big difference here is this bedroom being added. This bedroom being added sort of over a secondary entry mudroom zone, sort of like a private entry in the house in this area. This roof layout changes as well to incorporate that added line on the second floor.
So there's a kitchen on the second floor?
No, sorry, we're looking down. So this, this is that that higher ceiling, by making that missing volume of the. We're simply removing what's a bedroom space here with kind of a low ceiling to open up a kitchen. So it's like.
So the kitchen is on the first floor, goes all the way up to the second floor?
That's right.
Okay.
It's not all the way up. It's kind of lower.
So the second floor is really only just that little bit right there?
Yeah, the second floor really is this zone there.
Wow.
Oh.
And it overlooks.
And what's in the, that far rectangle? What's in here?
This is roofing.
Right.
So there's a first floor addition.
Okay.
Over the first floor addition. But we brought it up, and you'll see an elevation and rendering to how it's formed. We also had this terrace before. We're keeping it. It's, it's on the second floor. The way we address that adjacent kind of privacy factor is we have this sort of parapet wall here that wraps around. So it blocks due to the neighboring property. We thought it was, was successful before, so we left it.
I'm sorry, there's, there's gonna be stairs from the outside that go directly up.
Yeah, this is an interior stair.
No, the one down to the left a little bit.
On their extension.
The mudroom area.
No.
Oh, oh, sorry. This is, this is, sorry, that is graphically, this is, okay, so there's a new, there's a roof over here.
Yeah.
And then we have a trellis kind of over that mudroom entry.
Oh, okay. The mudroom, the mudroom on the first floor. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's kind of what we want to focus on. Yeah, I saw that. Yep, yep.
Because quite honestly, the elevations are flat and they're.
But. They're always important.
Here we go.
There you go.
So this is a rendering from sort of the, the north, the northeast corner, looking back at the house of Richards. It lives here. Uh, this is that existing dining room and kitchen beyond. So we're just reframing this and build, fixing it, but making this a higher space for the kitchen. This is existing entry spot, but we're kind of changing how, you know, it's covered compared to what it is now. This is the existing kitchen, dining, uh, living room area. We're adding, you know, this kind of bay window is six out about twelve inches. A slight roof extension here with our, and then we're adding a transom windows up high. We wanted this roof warm. So this roof, it stands over a standing seam, a black banner standing seam. Again, back and finishes the size, the same as it was before. It's a, a light gray horizontal standing seat, uh, ship lap siding here, and then a vertical ship lap with a tighter spacing, with a darker stain in this area. So it's sort of addressing, making roofs, you know, with a vertical siding that wraps around to your rear facade. It's a pure front view, taking that existing entry, the main entry here, dining room, living room, bay window, transom windows. This is that mudroom entry. That's that trellis element that we're interrupting the roof with the trellis to bring light in there. There's a garden behind here. That trellis carries down here to create, create a little bit of privacy of, you know, private interest. So there's a pathway that goes by this trellis, garden beyond. We have this garage. There is a garage on the front of the house. It was approved before. We wanted to incorporate it into the house as much as possible. So we wanted to treat it as, as part of this assembly of the bay window. Reality carries over and it just reads like a one composition. By the way, the landscape plan has not changed. We.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, about the trees.
The trees, yes. There are trees here that are in the way primarily of the, uh, I set this system best for. But it's unfortunate. There's a lot of trees on this block.
We've already approved that, that basically. Yes, yes.
So kind of moving, continuing down around the corner, this is that garage, that entry to the mudroom, that trellis, trellis horizontal here, and the path that goes down to the upper level. So this, this covered terrace down on lower level, again, this whole facade is pretty much the same. The big move is really demonstrated here where that bedroom is now at this spot. And we wanted it to not look like some oddball attachment. So we wanted to incorporate it. So we stretched this roof up to conceal or drape that volume up here and break down the vertical volume metrics of it. And we thought it was actually kind of handsome how it worked out versus before. It was a lower roof, but it seemed like an addition kind of attached to the house versus something else where incorporated with the rest of the volume metrics are higher form. And then on the rear, to get this stuff, it's all the same. This is that terrace upstairs. And, um, there's like kind of an eating kitchen here down below. This is a terrace out, out the back, basement area. And then there's a pool. This is always, this stuff is not changed as well, but there's this sort of screened in area. The other thing that's changed here is we were proposing, or we had proposed before a pool house that was here. We've removed that. So there's no pool house.
And then what is that screened in thing on the bottom?
This here.
Next to the pool, yeah.
It's a screen in porch. So basically, it was a screen in porch before. We basically decided, let's get rid of the pool house, save some money, capture some lot coverage in GFA and put it into the house for the second floor and make this essentially function as a pool house. And then again, material wise, all the same. But here, it's really about the lower level, sort of like the foundation of the house. Is that vertical darker siding? So it reads in contrast to the first. I believe that's it.
The pool is, is the same that was before and it had already been approved, correct?
Yeah.
I think you're adding for trees.
Yeah.
That's right.
The landscape. So really, there's different, there before, but there was a pool house here. We even did it, basically, let the lawn use a, a grass field. So we're removing trees, but we're piling the whole part. Key feature trees based on the pool orientation in the front. We have cherry up front and then the, the birches in the back.
Very nice. Yeah, I like the plan too. Where are the Italian cypresses? Illustrated beautifully.
And the vertical screen that we haven't done, we were just trying to figure out, is that the vertical screen is on the back of the house? Is that what you mean?
There are.
They're not around.
They're just, they're not here. I mean, they're Italian.
Well, we don't, we have something else.
They're vertical. So the roof of the house, stairs goes up two flights, two sessions of stairs. It's a screen that make it read like a volume.
Yeah.
The vertical screens are over. So you see it here obliquely. But like the bay windows in the front, we treated the stair window assembly as sort of a punch out being in the back of the house. And we screened it. That's what happened. To really create some light dynamics as you go up the stairs. On the upper floor, uh, this is where that mezzanine is and that bedroom is added here. These are just punch windows, picture windows and or casements.
Do you ladies have anything about the landscaping that you want to ask Emma?
Um, well, where are these Italian cypresses going?
We have them proposed really as our, our primary boundary. So as a screening device around the.
All that they get.
They use a lot of the row.
Oh.
And we're going to start with probably.
They can actually make a hedge almost with a cannon. You cut it and it all comes together.
That's right. There's, there's.
Oh, would that be, what, what?
Did that, yeah.
Okay. I mean, if that should, yeah, less Italianate.
The property, they have some huge, like green giants.
They have green giants. Um, and they, that house was done maybe like eight years ago. So. Okay, so, um, so direct, Michelle's mentioning this line here. So there's a series of green giants because they added a pool to that house.
Oh.
And, um, so there's sort of double screening.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
This side is more of our focus. This house is, you know, we want to make sure they don't, you're like there looking to have the pool. So we're running this line here. Then on the other side of this is a fence and then this is the landscape, uh, storage, basically apartment lot for landscaping company store.
And I guess there's fencing in there.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right. I got you.
And the pool fencing is somehow, uh, in there?
Yes, the fence is, is, is discreet as well. But we have a fence with a gate over on this side. It wraps all the way around. There's already a fence here and here, but we'll replace it. It's falling apart. And we'll bring it back up here. But on this side, we'll bring it up, degrade and return it here. So.
Okay.
So the main way if guests are coming over, they'll come back this way.
Very nice. Okay, so I would entertain a motion?
Yeah, I, I like, I really like the house. I love, um, the way you've kind of streamlined the way the roof is. And I, I think you do nice work.
Very good. So are you making the motion, my friend?
Yeah, I'll make the first motion.
I would second that with a wow.
Yeah.
There you go. All in favor?
Yeah, aye. I think it, I think it's beautiful.
And a great job. Great job. Thanks, Karen. Okay. Continuing on here with the new business, we have sixty-four Jermaine Avenue.
I did not see them here.
Proposed reuse conversion.
Is that the fuel warehouse?
It's the.
It's not gonna be condos?
It is.
And is there a change, there a change in what was originally approved a few years back?
Oh, a number of years, yeah. But it is still gonna be, like, three of them, I think.
Wow.
Well, instead of.
Instead of four, they're making it three. Right, yeah, that's.
Making a little smaller, but, ah, but it will be better than, um, great.
That's cool.
It's that factory.
I mean. Yeah. Yeah. Motion to adjourn sixty-four Jermaine Avenue.
All right. I'll second.
And then you're gonna send that into multi-family?
They can. There you go.
I'll make that motion.
Second? We just did that. No, we're now, we're, she means to adj, are you, what are you doing?
The whole meeting, just that.
We can leave. No, we already did. We already adjourned the.
I'm in favor of adjourning all of it.
Yes.